This meeting of the Somerville City Council is now in order in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023. This meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation, and please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. Can we do something about the echo in the room?
Maybe.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Wilson. Counselor Said.
Present. Present.
Counselor Said.
Here.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Burnley. Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
With eight counselors present and three absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Counselors Wilson and Scott will be here shortly. Counselor Pineda Newfeld is traveling. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that this city council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We'll begin our meeting with a moment of silence. Are there counselors wishing to speak on members of our community? Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you this evening, I'd like us all to remember Marjorie "Knee Loveless" Fowler. She was actually my wife's aunt, mother-in-law to Chris Majors, formerly of the Fire Department, Deputy Chief Majors. She was the beloved wife of the late Hubert Fowler, devoted mother of William, wife Deborah, and daughter, her daughter Sandra, and her husband Joe of Hampton, New Hampshire. She was a homemaker. She was just an amazing person. She lived to 92. She was one of 14 of the Loveless children, and you could always see her down on Governor Wintup Road sweeping the sidewalk, and just her yard was always impeccable. I know that she's going to be missed by Nancy and Chris as well as Billy, and we'll all miss her at family functions. And Marjorie, Aunt Marjorie was a very special lady, so I hope that we'll all remember her this evening.
Thank you, counselor. Everyone who's able, if you'd please rise for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Colleagues, we have one item that we're going to take out of order, which is 10 dot 11, memo from the mayor's office regarding hiring in police and fire. Before we do that, we'll do our grant of location public hearing. So will the clerk please call the next item?
Yes. Item 1.3 is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 22nd, 2024.
Seeing no discussion, that item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 3.1 is a grant of location from Eversource to install 12 feet of conduit in Aleweith-Brook Parkway from Manhole 12332 at the intersection of Aleweith-Brook Parkway and Broadway.
This public hearing is open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the item?
I have Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy, good evening.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm excellent, thank you. Eversource Energy would like to install approximately 12 feet of conduit. This work is necessary for capital improvement to accommodate increased load and demand. We are getting a DCR permit, and we already have obtained an MWRA permit for the area.
Thank you, Jackie Duffy. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
No more hands.
No more hands online. We'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, that item is laid on the table for approval.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Oh, Counselor Scott is here. Let the record show.
And the next item will be the item that we're going to take out of order, which is item 10.11, a communication of the mayor conveying an update on police and fire hiring.
All right. And before we get to this, Counselor McLaughlin asked to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to table this item to discuss it at a later date, preferably the next full council meeting. I want to tell people the reason why. We all received notification about this yesterday, very detailed memo that probably took a lot of time, and it was decided the day before this meeting to submit this as a supplemental item. The new firefighter list in particular is coming out next week, April 1st, so I don't think it's a coincidence that these dates are lining up like this. So there's going to be a number of people who are going to find out very soon that their name will not even be considered for the Fire Department. The Fire Department Union has told me they haven't even had time to consult with their labor council, so I don't even know what questions to ask at this point. And I do believe that the residents, mostly Somerville residents and disabled veterans who took this exam and are on this list, have a right to be present for this conversation to find out why they're going to get bypassed. So I would like to table this and discuss it at the next meeting. And I'll just add one other thing is I don't like doing this to city staff. I see a lot of people came here. There's a table set up for just this occasion, for a meeting that we found out about yesterday. And I don't like wasting people's time. I don't like treating people disrespectfully, but I do feel like my time has been wasted lately. I feel like the flow of information is not reciprocal. The cooperation is not the same, and I don't know what to do besides make small issues about things like this and hold it up and let them come back on our time when we're ready to discuss this item. So I move to lay this item on the table for next full council meeting.
Discussion on that motion. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, and thank you to the good board one counselor. You know, I agree, and I'm sure we'll hear from Counselor Davis, who's been on this council for years. We've, over time and time again, have asked for more time with especially certain types of documents, big decisions that need to be made. We've been asked to allow for, you know, give a week's time for our agendas that we put in. We've been asked multiple things that we've cooperated on, and yet again, we're here now being asked to do something just the night before we get a communication about this. So I will concur with Counselor McLaughlin, and I will be in favor of tabling this. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. I also very much appreciate this motion to lay this item on the table, and it frustrates me to know that exactly one year ago, I placed an order before this council requesting that we work with the law department to pass an ordinance preventing lateral transfers and hires. That was an item that sat in legislative matters for a full year before it expired, of course, at the turnover. So I'm sorry that, although I guess I understand why we didn't get a whole lot of traction on that from the mayor's office, but I look forward to discussing this with the opportunity for some reflection and organizing. So thank you, sir.
Thank you all. What else to say about this? For members of the public, there is a memo on our agenda that all of you can read that outlines that the mayor is going to use lateral hiring in the police and fire department. Tonight, the item on our agenda is a discussion, a chance for us to ask questions. There's no vote that the city council is being asked to take, but as one counselor, I wholeheartedly agree. I am nowhere near knowing even what questions to ask. Clearly, we have representative of the firefighters' union here. We have not had a chance to speak with them or with the police union, and it is, I think, very important that for that public discussion, even if we are not being asked to vote on anything, it is important that we give that conversation its due. So I'll support the motion and, you know, apologize to folks who had to waste their time coming here tonight. On that?
So the next item before the council is item 4.1, an order by Counselor Strezzo that the executive director of the Arts Council appear before the Housing and Community Development Committee to present a Porch Fest safety plan that addresses pedestrian safety concerns, promotion of street closures, intersection crossing safety, and the prevention of aggressive and dangerous driver behavior during the active event hours.
Just before we hear from Counselor Strezzo, I'll just say that it is my intention to have that item discussed at our next full city council meeting on April 11th. Counselor Strezzo on this item.
So I, well, it's pretty, explains what I'm trying to get. I'm sure that we all saw in Porch Fest that we all want to have a good time and make sure that everyone that comes into our community or lives in our community has a good time with this, but have definitely seen some unsafe situations, and I'm sure you saw videos from last year where drivers were being aggressive with pedestrians, which is totally unacceptable. So I definitely want to have this sent to Housing and Community Development and to discuss at the next meeting.
Excellent. That item is referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Item 4.2 is an order by Counselor Strezzo that the Director of the Office of Sustainability and Environment and the Director of Health and Human Services discuss how climate change affects residents over 65 years old and how climate-forward programs can address this demographic.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. Can you send this to Equity?
This item is referred to the Committee on Equity.
Item 4.3 is a resolution by Counselor Strezzo that the administration discuss post-pilot plan considerations of the guaranteed basic income pilot program.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. I want to be on record that that doesn't mean that, first off, very excited about this program that is that the administration created. However, it is a pilot program, and with that, as recipients will be receiving the guaranteed basic income, we need to know. So this is, of course, very preliminary, but I'm getting it in the hopper so that as the program evolves, that we absolutely are discussing what the plan is going forward. We can't have families receiving this and not have some form of bridge to what next steps are, could be, and the future. So please send this to Equity.
This item is referred to the Committee on Equity.
Item 4.4 is a communication by Counselor Strezzo conveying a report of the Children's Cabinet.
Counselor Strezzo.
All right. I wanted to update the council quickly on the fact that the Children's Cabinet has been meeting weekly, I'm sorry, monthly, and the big take is that there's, that first off, getting out the communication of what exactly is the Children's Cabinet because it's, it's a kind of an unspoken yet very effective committee and has been running for years. A great invite I want to give to everyone is the Week of the Young Child. I'm sure you saw the banner hanging outside City Hall. It's going to be April 8th through April 12th. There'll be a rollout and a party Thursday, April 11th from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. on the summer, I'm sorry, the high school concourse. Please come.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That item is placed on file.
Item 4.5 is a resolution by Counselor Klingon that the administration provide an update on the Braille embosser purchased in summer 2023, including its current location and the plan to put it to use.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you.
Counselor Scott would like to sign on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. This is just, I'd like this to go to Equity. It's just a general inquiry. I know that we had purchased it. I think it was actually even spring. I might have made a mistake, not quite summer, but I'd just like to know where we are with that device and whether, when we're going to be able to put it to use soon. Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Burnley would like to sign on and speak on the item?
Yes. Thank you. Through the chair, thank you to the counselor from Ward 4 for putting this forward. I think this is really important. I believe he brought forward a similar item a year ago as well, and I, you know, I'd really love just some clarity here because the last I heard, we, the council had cut from the budget and passed a resolution in support of a Brailer. It was included in the budget to purchase a Brailer, a certain amount of money. Then the next thing I heard, and the last thing I heard, is that we were going to lease a Brailer somewhere else and instead, because it was, I guess, more cost-efficient or some, for some reason. The council's intent here was clear, and I think this order reflects that intent, but I, I'm so far back, I don't even know if we have a Brailer or if we're, we essentially rent one. And so I would love just some real clarity there and for us to actually move forward with the intent that this body had to purchase a Brailer. Thank you.
Counselor Klingon.
Yeah, on that point, through you, Mr. President. So my understanding is we have purchased a Brailer. That's about all I know. I don't know which department purchased it or where it actually resides, you know, where this device lives. I just know that we purchased one almost a year ago.
That item is referred to the Committee on Equity.
Item 4.6 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Inspection Services update the Ward 1 city counselor on the recent collapse of a house at 16 Bonner Street.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was a recent collapse of a house on 16 Bonner Street, right next to the Edgerly School. Many of you may have heard about this. I don't know why it happened, but I do have experience with the contractors who did work there, so I have a lot of questions. I'd like to refer this to Public Health and Safety.
That item is referred to Public Health and Safety.
Item 4.7 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Inspection Services update the Ward 1 city counselor on the status of any permits issued to contractors associated with 16 Bonner Street.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Public Health and Safety, please.
That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety. And Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on.
Item 4.8 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Commissioner of Public Works ensure that city trash barrels in Ward 1 are emptied on a regular basis.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes, Mr. President. So I walk around my neighborhood all the time, and East Somerville in particular has pretty consistently always had a big trash problem, and lately it just seems to be worse and worse. And on my way down Broadway, I saw, you know, trash barrel overflowing, put in a 311, request for it, saw a week later that the same trash was there, so it wasn't even picked up on a weekly basis. Those barrels, which are the big belly barrels, are now taped up. I'll get to that in a second, but I just want to make sure, it seems like they're not even being picked up weekly, and I feel like they need to be picked up multiple times a week based on the amount of trash there are. So I'd like to refer this to, no, I'll just approve this. Thank you.
That item is approved.
Item 4.9 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Commissioner of Public Works replace any defective big-belly trash barrels in Ward 1 with standard trash barrels until they are repaired.
Counselor McLaughlin.
As I mentioned, some of these big-belly trash barrels, one on Florence Street, Florence and Pearl, another one on Broadway, apparently they've been broken for some time, and people just kept stuffing trash on them. They're taped up now, but it'd be nice to have at least a temporary trash barrel there until we get these fixed. So I'd move to approve this.
That item is approved. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, shout out to the Moose family also for pointing this out and getting more people in the community to care about it. Thank you.
Next item.
Item 4.10 is a communication by Counselor McLaughlin announcing monthly Ward 1 community cleanups on the first Monday of every month, beginning at 5:30 p.m. at Connection Church.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Something positive to talk about. Because we have such a big trash problem, and East Somerville has consistently held community cleanups twice a year, even when the entire city hasn't been doing the cleanups lately, we've done them at least twice a year, but it really just doesn't seem like enough even when the city is picking up the trash. And I do want to point out that, you know, the Director of Public Works is a person who consistently gets back to me, so I do appreciate that. We have a lot of trash in the city, in the ward, and once a week and even twice a year, cleanups aren't going to do it. So we're going to have, myself and East Somerville Main Streets and Connection Church, we're organizing these community cleanups. The first will be April 1st, same day as the firefighter list comes out, 5:30 in front of the Connection Church. I've coordinated with DPW to pick up the trash afterwards, and we're going to do this the first Monday of every month. So if people would like to come, please join, and I'll spread the word, and I'll move to approve.
Excellent. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. I think it's a great idea. I would, I'm thinking about replicating it myself in Ward 4, but it just really, this seems to be an ongoing theme. A lot of residents seem to be emailing us about trash, you know, various parts of the cities. And, you know, it does remind me, actually, I think people have also asked what happened to the citywide cleanup. You know, Comcast used to, we used to have that Comcast Cares, they used to kind of sponsor with Groundworks, this spring citywide cleanup, and I don't know if it was after COVID that that kind of just kind of stalled out or what happened, but, you know, at the, at the very least, not all of us necessarily can do, you know, monthly cleanups. It would be great to know, you know, and I can put this in writing at some point, but does the administration plan on bringing that back? Like, where is Comcast on this, or have they just abandoned us on the cleanups?
Next item, please. That item is approved.
Items.
Actually, sorry. Counselor Wilson is still in transit, so let's lay the three finance committee reports on the table and move on to 6D, please.
Item 6D is a report of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, meeting on March 20th, 2024.
Counselor Strezzo.
I'm up. All right. It was a hybrid meeting, Wednesday, March 20th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. We discussed, excuse me, playground ADA accessibility and universal playgrounds. We had two representatives of the community, but also Halisa Mione of the Commission with Persons of Disabilities there, and we had public space planner, planners attend as well as Director Galgani, and they're considering Kennedy School as a site for a universal playground and, and the considerations for choosing a site. And that there's an item in the Finance Committee for CPA funds to be used for the Kennedy Playground, about $32,000. And in addition, OSPCD is working on a five-to-seven-year plan for open spaces in parks. They're working on that now, and it should be available by the end of June, so I want to put that all on your radars. We started the conversation of feasibility of fair housing enforcement. That will be continued on in, you can check the minutes on that. That will be a conversation we'll be continuing on in a future HCD meeting with, with more updates, and it's going to be exciting. I also want to put this to your attention, bring this to your attention, colleagues, because there was a, we discussed water bills and the possibility of low-income housing units and benevolent landlords and city subsidized water bill programs. So there is an ARPA funding program, ARPA-funded program that is set to expire in days. It's the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. It's going to expire at the end of March, and it currently serves 900 Somerville residents. I don't know what that's going to look like for us as a community. And currently, I'm sure some of you have been approached by the consultants. The city says it's working on a, working on a pilot program of, of water bill assistance, but that may not be potentially for six months to a year. So you may get an influx of calls on this coming up. And with that, I offer these minutes to be approved as they are submitted.
Thank you. That committee report is laid on the table for approval, and let's take up those finance committee reports.
Excellent. So the next item will be item 6A, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on March 19th, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, Finance Committee met Tuesday, March 19th for 56 minutes with all five members present. We worked through a one-item agenda that was the FY24 midyear financial report as required by ordinance. Director Bean did a thorough presentation for us, and Director Gill added some information from HR on hiring trends and vacancies. Due to the short time window we had for the meeting, we didn't really have that much time for questions, so I encourage colleagues who didn't have sufficient time to get their questions answered to do so at the special meeting on April 11th that will deal with some very similar topics. That presentation from Director Bean is up in Legistar for counselors and the public to look at, and I strongly encourage everyone to do so. If you haven't read Clerk Wodzowski's minutes, please do that. With that, I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted.
Seeing no discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval.
And the next item is item 6B, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting as a committee of the whole on March 19th, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, second verse same as the first. The Finance Committee met then a second time on the 19th, meeting as a committee of the whole with 10 counselors present for our public hearing on the community's budget priorities for FY25. Counselor McLaughlin had childcare duties that evening, but thankfully, our meetings are recorded for anyone who isn't able to enjoy them live. I'll credit Counselor McLaughlin with the inspiration for having a public hearing on budget priorities at all. During our conversation about the overall budget priority process, Counselor McLaughlin made the excellent point to me that we had included the public hearing on budget priorities in our proposed charter language that was sent to the mayor last year. So this was very much in the spirit of that. Over the course of an hour and 27 minutes, we heard from 37 members of the public, as captured in Clerk Wodzowski's excellent minutes. These folks spoke about a number of things, including but not limited to affordable housing, housing stabilization, ARPA-funded programs like our municipal voucher program that just launched a great fanfare, bringing the Winter Hill Community Innovation School under one roof at the Edgerly, transportation for Winter Hill Community Innovation School students that doesn't come out of the school budget, a Green New Deal for SPS, paid family medical leave, a fair contract for our SMEA city workers, an unarmed civilian response program, invasive plant removal, medical debt forgiveness, municipal composting pilot, overdose prevention center, transit affordability, and increased city staff. Then I shared the draft of the Google Form survey with the options of area support for Tuesday night's FY25 shared budget priorities meeting, and asked colleagues to look that over and contact city council staff with any questions or concerns in order to have that locked down for this week's meeting. I want to thank everyone who turned out and shared their budget priorities for FY25, and ask that you accept this committee report as submitted.
Seeing no discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval.
And the next item is item 6C, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting as a committee of the whole on March 26th, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Me again. Mr. President, the Finance Committee also met Tuesday, March 26th with all 11 members present. Over the course of two hours and one minute, the 24 of those minutes were spent in recess. My colleagues and I went through our top individual budget priorities, expressed support for up to 10 areas on the aforementioned survey, then hashed out resolutions for 10 shared budget priorities for FY25. Those areas were, in order of counselors expressing support on that survey, and then alphabetical order in the case of ties, housing stabilization, homeless services, alternative emergency response, housing affordability, municipal composting, rodent mitigation, medical debt forgiveness, municipal building decarbonization, out-of-school time programming, and overdose prevention center. Then we voted as a body to call it a night. Clerk Wodzowski wrote up customarily great minutes for her final meeting with us, so with that, I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted, and I will move to waive the reading of item 7.2 and ask that it be sent to Finance. Thanks.
Excellent. Those items are so ordered, and I want to give a big thanks to the Chair of Finance and our wonderful city council staff who made that process work so seamlessly. There was a lot of work behind the scenes.
Item 6E is a report of the Committee on Land Use, meeting on March 21st, 2024.
All right, and we'll also take up the planning board recommendations on these items. That's 8-2, and we can waive the reading on that. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on March 21st. We took up two items in a very quick meeting. One was request an ordainment of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow recreational camps for children citywide. This is something that passed unanimously by the council or by the committee. And then we also took up a zoning map amendment change to remove fab industry requirements at 321 Washington Street. This was unanimously rejected, and the stated reason was that the person who submitted this application never showed up, never gave us a reason, and a lot of people said that they were opposed to it. So we voted against. I submit the committee report to be accepted.
I will just note that it was only not unanimous in the sense that I was recused from that item. And now we have to do a roll call on the committee reporter. Yes?
Yes, indeed. On the land use committee report of March 21st, 2024, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that committee report is approved, and that puts one item before the council for enrollment and ordainment. And that is item 24-0037, an amendment to the zoning ordinances, Article 9, to establish a recreational camp for children use. On enrollment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counsel Pineda Neufeld.
Counsel Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Davis.
Yes.
Counsel Wilson.
Yes.
Counsel Said.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Mbah.
Yes.
Counsel Burnley.
Aye.
Counsel Klingon.
Yes.
Counsel Strezzo.
Yes.
Counsel Pineda Neufeld.
Counsel Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is ordained.
Excellent.
And the next item is Item 6F, a report of the Committee on Licenses and Permits, meeting on March 27th, 2024.
Counsel Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. We had a quick meeting at 19 minutes, not as quick as Counsel McGlaughlin's meeting at 16 minutes and 47 seconds. And we discussed three items pertaining to Lucky Strike, where you can very soon take part in bowling, arcades, some good old-fashioned fun until 2:00 in the morning, because we also discussed an extension to the hours. And we also approved, recommended for approval, a new used car dealer license for a single vehicle. And we thought that despite the applicant not showing up, there were no problems with the location, which is already in use for car repairs, and one car seems like a pretty minor ask. And so with that, I would ask that this, let me just find my report, be accepted, and thank you.
Seeing no discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 6G is a report of the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety, meeting on March 20th, 2024.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we met, had nearly a quorum of the council, because all three committee members were present, and Counsel Burnley and Counsel Klingon attended as residents. We also had a well-attended public meeting as well, from people interested in address and homelessness, as well as COVID-19. So the big thing we talked about in my monthly updates about homelessness in the city, and for people who know about the homeless encampment underneath I-93, MassDOT has announced that they're going to be doing serious roadwork there on April 17th, or they're rather going to be having to remove people from this encampment by April 17th. So I've been pushing the city to really try to find a place for people to go when this happens. On the positive side of things, some of a homeless coalition has helped people get into permanent or stable housing. There's still several people who need help. And the last I checked, after this committee report, it seems like the encampment's been abandoned, but a lot of the trash is still there. And the city actually said that they will be picking up trash twice a week, which is great, but there's a lot of trash down there, and they can't pick it all up at once. So hopefully, by at least April 17th, these massive piles of trash will be addressed. And I'm still hoping that we have some sort of announcement about a permanent plan for housing for people. So that happened. I also did address some issues around crime in the neighborhood. I know people at 50 Cross Street East have been concerned about crimes like theft and breaking and entering, things like this. We did have two serious incidents of violence, one perpetrated against a woman and another against a man or an adult in front of their child at the stop and shop, both by the same person who frequents this encampment. So I asked about what security measures are being taken to protect people and asked for the city to consider this for the future. So that was left in committee, and we'll discuss that on April 17th as well. The date happens to be the same time that the people under the highway will be, will no longer be allowed to be there. We also took up two items from Counsel Burnley about COVID-19 and access to tests, and Counsel Burnley and Counsel Strezzo, about preparedness with masks and tests for people. We had a little back-and-forth conversation with the Director of Public Health. At least one resident who attended didn't seem satisfied with the answers, and Counsel Burnley has an item on this week's agenda that I assume will go to the same committee so we can get further answers there. And then finally, we had a very brief conversation about the search for the chief of police. Director Ann Gill came and attended and explained the process and explained that they're working diligently to try to find a new chief, and they expect to narrow the field down very soon. The biggest question I had was that the Director of Racial and Social Justice was the previous person in charge of the search. We no longer have a Director of Race and Social Justice, but it seems like the timeline is going to be a lot faster for finding a new chief. So I asked how is that possible? And Director Gill said that there are people within the RSJ department who are doubling up their efforts and are working extra hard to make this happen. So that's my committee report, and I submit it to be accepted.
I'd love to, yeah. Just a quick update, given Counsel McGlaughlin's comments about the Police Chief Selection Committee, as the council's rep on that. I can tell you all, I'm limited in what I can say, but we did receive yesterday preliminary list of candidates for that. So there is movement on that. There should be some, the dates are a little bit in flux, but it is roughly on track, I can confirm, and I'm looking forward to digging in on that.
Seeing no further discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 6H is a report of the Committee on Public Works and Public Utilities, meeting on March 18th, 2024.
Counsel Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. All members were present. There was a few items in there, but two were discharged because there were similar items in housing and community development. So the bulk of the meeting was around gas infrastructure, replacing, I'm sorry, repairing gas pipes versus replacing. We didn't have anybody from National Grid or EverSource there, but the city, Brian Pulslate, was there from Engineering, and he did convey the city's desire to, wherever they can advocate for, if the situation allows, because not all, not every time are they able to, like, reline a pipe like they did down on Somerville Ave. That's, sometimes it's just not in the, they're not able to do that. So there is state legislation making its way up at the State House, which would ultimately, ultimately force the utility companies to start repairing versus replacing. And that, I'm trying to just, yeah, House Bill, Senate Bill 2103, it's been accepted by the State Senate and reported out favorably, but the House has not accepted it yet. It might go to a conference committee, and there'll be some activity on the bill. But this is the future Clean Heat Bill, and it'll give the city some power, some teeth, you know, some tools to be able to mandate, or not mandate, but at least create regulations locally as to how to deal with gas infrastructure. So with that, I ask that this committee report be accepted as submitted.
Seeing no discussion, the committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 6I is a report of the Special Committee on School Building, Facilities, and Maintenance, meeting on March 25th, 2024.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Joint Committee did meet on that date, all members were present. We were joined by Superintendent Carmona, Assistant Superintendent Chad Maza, as well as Director Raish from Infrastructure Asset Management, Director Woods from Capital Projects, as well as Eric Larson from the Office of Sustainability and Environment. Thank you to all of those staff members for coming in and providing updates. The minutes for this meeting are very detailed and very excellent, so I won't go into a whole lot of detail. We discussed the status of the MSBA process for Winter Hill and Brown School potential replacements. That, you know, that is moving along. That's about the extent of what, there's more detail, but that's sort of the takeaway. We did pass a resolution, it tended to be a standing resolution, so that we can just have a regular update on that process, so that we don't have to, you know, keep submitting things. So the item was marked completed, and we'll replace it with that, with that standing order, keep that in committee. And so it's my intent that every time we get together, we'll anticipate having just an update on where things stand on that. So stay tuned as that process moves forward. We got a brief update on work that had been done on leaks at the Brown School. We heard about, and then, so then the last two discussions, one was a discussion on sustainability measures and funding that's available from the federal government through the Inflation Reduction Act. We heard from Sarah Ross, who is a co-founder of a national nonprofit called Undaunted K-12. She gave an excellent presentation, which I believe, hopefully, is attached to the item. Obviously, folks can also watch the recording on the City Council website. Excellent presentation on a number of really exciting federal funding options that are available. Director Raish and Mr. Larson spoke about some of the challenges with leveraging that funding, and given our situation with our existing school buildings, small spaces, and, but, you know, that they are aware and working together. So hopefully, that, you know, there might be something positive that comes out of that to help move those processes along, as we look at new school buildings and potentially retrofitting some of our existing buildings. And then the final discussion was on the Edgerly School, the Winter Hill at Edgerly, and most of that was preempted by a very detailed memo that was provided by the administration prior to the meeting, so I would encourage folks to take a look at that, as well as you can, the discussion here is very detailed in the minutes. The good news, of course, is that they were able to figure out a way to get all of the classes into the same building next year. It wasn't the way they had initially planned, because there were some challenges with ADA requirements and the relative value of the building versus the cost of the work that would need to be done, et cetera, et cetera. You can read all about it in the minutes. But, you know, they're continuing to look at options and ways to make the necessary upgrades in that building through different methods and avenues, while, of course, at the same point, prioritizing the educational experience of the students there. So with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Seeing no discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 7.1 is a request of the mayor, requesting ordainment of an amendment to Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, and 10 of the zoning ordinances to remove conflicts with the state building code.
That item is referred to land use with a copy to the Planning Board.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the city clerk, submitting an amendment to the Rules of the City Council to accommodate remote participation and facilitate accessibility.
Excellent. So we will refer this to the Rules Committee, but I also just wanted to ask Clerk Wells to explain what this is.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the council. So you may be aware that with the temporary provisions for remote and hybrid participation due to COVID, that will very likely become permanent provisions for remote and hybrid participation. Counselors are welcome to participate in meetings however they see fit, whether that is in person or remotely. And because of that, it can be a challenge to assess whether or not there is a quorum present when counselors are participating online and they aren't physically in the space. We noticed this at the last city council meeting, where there were several times where there was not a quorum in this council chamber. And so we were trying to figure out whether or not somebody was online and whether they could turn their camera on. And I would like to remove that uncertainty. And so the changes to the rules, two of them, one to address city council and one to address committees, require that counselors have their cameras on in order to be counted towards quorum. The other is, you may notice that we now have captioning, which was quite an endeavor to figure out. There is a human behind that captioning, and that human is listening, watching the live stream or listening to the live stream, and it is challenging for them to hear what is being said if it's not being said into a microphone. So we want to account for the fact that anyone who is participating by watching that stream and relying on that closed captioning should have the same access to the information that those of us who are here in the chamber have. So we want to make sure that for any vote to be recorded, that vote is spoken into a microphone, so that those who are participating with these accessibility provisions are able to follow and track that the same way that those of us who are in the chamber are able to.
Excellent. Counsel Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, I commend the clerk for putting these forward and recognizing the kind of situation we're in in terms of having hybrid meetings. I am curious about the process and the history around clerks submitting changes. I think it's very interesting. I'm not aware of it, because I'm just a wee-wee lad, but I will note that the proposed changes to Rule 14 would, in terms of impact for counselors, mean that if you were to walk to the back of that room and try to yell to, and say, "I'm here," technically, that doesn't count anymore, or signify a vote by being outside the room or far away from your microphone. Just want to note that if we make this change, we should be in compliance with it by actually being at our seats in order to record our votes. Thank you.
So we're going to discuss these in committee before they actually do or do not become rules, but, you know, I would, to the extent possible, encourage everyone to be on camera in our virtual meetings. Originally, the clerk reminded me when we were using GoToMeeting in the early pandemic, it was impossible for us to do that. So we sort of established, because there was this technical limitation, that technical limitation obviously has not existed for a long time. So if we want to obviate the need for a long-drawn-out rules process, which we will undertake, it's good practice to be on camera as well for the public. Next item, please, so that's referred to rules.
The next item is Item 9.1.
Counsel Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to waive the readings and move to accept Items 9.1 through 9.12, as well as 10.12. And just note that amongst the many drain licenses that are here, we also have a 6K from TUPS, which is going to be used to raise money to help do research and building for water services for countries that have scarcity of water and the lack of infrastructure in place to help get people clean drinking water. For members of the public, feel free to look at Item 10.12 and get yourself involved. Thank you.
Those items are approved.
That brings us to Item 9.13, a public communication from the Parent Teacher Association, submitting comments regarding the Edgerly School.
That item is placed on file, and unless there are subjections, I'd like to waive the readings of 9:14 to 9:19 and place those all on file. Sorry, let me just double-check something. Yes.
Item 10.1 is an order by Counsel Burnley, that the Director of Parking update this council on efforts to ticket vehicles with illegal license covers, including how many tickets have been issued for this reason in the last year.
Counsel Burnley.
Thank you, through you. This idea came from a constituent who pointed out that traffic and parking could be a valuable and necessary ally in the fight to make, get rid of the illegal practice of covering your license plate for parked vehicles that are on city streets. Counselor Wilson, last year, put up a similar item that specifically focused on SPD and traffic enforcement around vehicles with license covers. But we're going for, from cars in motion to cars that are stopped in terms of this discussion, because that has big implications on who actually does the work there. So hopefully, we can see the scope of the problem through this discussion and how much enforcement has been undertaken in the last year. And I'd like that to go to a committee, traffic and parking.
That item is, Counsel Wilson first.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to thank Counsel Burnley for the mention there. I also did speak with Director Renford of Traffic and Parking last year about this as well. It seemed to sort of get bounced between, this is an SPD thing, this is a traffic and parking thing. I'd be happy to talk to Director Renford again this year, see if anything's changed. I guess it was a private conversation, so I won't relay that in public. If Director Renford is willing to come to committee and explain in public what I was told privately, I'd be happy to do that in Traffic and Parking, which I sit on. So, thanks, Counselor.
That item is referred to Traffic and Parking.
Item 10.2 is an order by Counsel Burnley, that the Director of Health and Human Services update this council on the plan to prioritize the deployment of masks and tests to reduce the spread of COVID-19.
Counsel Burnley.
Thank you, through you. As Counsel McGlaughlin mentioned earlier, I attended this week's Public Health and Public Safety meeting to listen to the discussion regarding the deployment of pre-COVID-19 tests and masks at our public libraries, which were funded over the last year or so through ARPA funds. And with the, those funds expiring fairly soon and the city not being able to rely on them, we saw an outpouring of concern from residents about their ongoing needs in regards to public health and stopping the spread of COVID-19. If my colleagues remember, we had one resident speak about having had COVID five times, and that I can report that that resident has had COVID six times now. And the impact of that on the person's life were just unfathomable in some cases. The Director of Health and Human Services spoke to the committee about a shift in strategy from the administration, which does parallel a shift in strategy from the state regarding not focusing, focusing less on COVID-19 as a sole virus and instead packaging it along with the flu and SARS as respiratory viruses, and trying to tackle them all together, which did have, I would say, a mixed reaction from the community. Having said that, I'm willing to hear that the administration does not have the resources to continue this program. If that is the case, what is important is that we take the resources that we do have and ensure that the folks who are most likely to contract COVID or become seriously ill from COVID are taken care of. And so from COVID are taken care of. And so I'm hoping that we can have a discussion to determine how the administration is deploying these resources and what criteria they're considering when picking which populations receive them. So I'd love for this to go to Public Health and Public Safety.
That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 10.3 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Director of the Office of Housing Stability explain to this council how requirements, paperwork, or means testing will change for ARPA-funded programs that transition to funding from the city.
Counselor Burnley?
Thank you. Just this week, we discussed some incredible housing provisions and programs that this city offers with the support of ARPA funding. Since then, I have been made aware that some of these programs do require a fair amount of paperwork and, in some cases, means testing effectively in order to, for folks to qualify for them. And in some cases, that means testing is redundant with the existing requirements for the folks who are applying for it. And I'm just going to say personally, and as a matter of principle, I'm against means testing. I believe that there's a way to get the resources to the folks who need it without adding additional layers of bureaucracy that tend to make programs less effective. And we will talk about that again in a second because there are examples in this city of that. And I would love for us to give as much support as we possibly can to the folks who need it without making them go through an onerous process to do so. So love for that to go to Housing Community Development, I suppose.
Sorry, did you say Housing and Community Development? Yeah, that item is referred to Housing and Community Development.
Item 10.4 is a resolution by Counselor Burnley that the administration explain the process of how residents can receive free prepaid Charlie cards, what paperwork or requirements they must fulfill before they receive this service, or how much funding was allocated to this program.
Counselor Burnley?
Thank you. Along the similar lines, the city purchased, I believe, 500 Charlie cards about a year ago for, what's happening, for, for the residents to use, folks who are particularly low income and who require public transit to get to work, to get to hospitals, to get their groceries. And I am very much in favor of that, although I am also in favor of free transit lines. However, what I'm not a fan of is when our programs are ineffective because we create onerous processes to access them. Of those 500 Charlie cards that were made available, I believe 350 of them are still available. And the, according to what we heard from a resident, and this is me just taking our constituents in good faith, those hundreds of Charlie cards will expire fairly soon, in a few months. And if that's the case, we've just wasted, or the administration has wasted, I don't, an amount of money which I'm not actually sure about, which is why the last provision of this order is to actually understand, how much money are we talking about for these 500 cards? And the fact that more than half have not been used, because as I've been made, I've been told, the process to fill out the paperwork to receive it, I think it's a huge wasted opportunity for this community to help the folks who need it the most. I, just recently, connecting this to issues of the Winter Hill, I've heard from so many parents who are really struggling to get their kids to the school, who are asking us to provide funds for busing. And they, one resident recently was asking around about whether the city had any programs to, for Charlie cards for low-income folks. They were not, they didn't know about this program, and they certainly didn't have clear access to it. So I think this is an opportunity for us to look at the programs we have, to get lessons learned, and hopefully move forward in a way that we can actually get the resources to the folks who need it the most. So with that, I would love for this item to go to... President, do you have a suggestion here? This could go, I think, at least one or two ways.
I could see Committee on Equity, Housing and Community Development.
Let's go Equity.
All right. This is referred to the Committee on Equity.
Item 10.5 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Mobility work with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to preserve the pedestrian footbridge on McGrath Highway as part of the grounding McGrath project.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Rules haven't changed yet. Thanks, Mr. President. So there's a great project coming our way, hopefully 2028, to ground McGrath Highway, narrow the streets so that it's safer. I strongly support this project. I think it's a positive for the thing for the community. There are two things that concern me about this project is, one, they're talking about tearing down the pedestrian footbridge, and, two, possibly replacing the stoplights there with blinking, flashing stoplights, which I don't think is going to be an acceptable way to cross the street. People have pointed out that, you know, we're going to narrow the street, it's going to be safer. Those streets are narrowed right now. And as an able-bodied adult, I have no problem crossing the street. But for someone who is older, or in the case for me, like having my son cross the street, I wouldn't feel comfortable having him cross that highway, whether it's two or three lanes. It's also a footbridge that is used for parents from the Winter Hill School who are now taking their kids to Edgely School. The city of Somerville has actually advertised that this is the footbridge path that you want to use to get there safely. So I don't want to get in the way of a very positive project, but I do think that, I don't understand the logic behind removing it. If there's a way to keep it and save money, that would be ideal to me. And I know it's a big, ugly-looking thing, but a lot of people use it. I don't have to use it, but other people do. So it's a concern of mine, and I want to advocate, you know, I have already expressed to MassDOT my concerns. I think it would be stronger coming from our transportation department, who speaks to them regularly to ensure this happens. And I guess I'd like to see this referred to committee, just to see if we can get the city to give us their perspective on it.
Excellent. Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on. Counselor Klingon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. Yeah, I've gotten emails from Winter Hill parents, Ward Four parents, that are concerned about the removal of the footbridge. I share those concerns insofar as I want to know what the timeline is. If they, if they are in fact hell-bent on removing it, at the very least, I would like to, if it has to be removed, it would have to, I would like to see it be at the absolute end of the project. Like, at least until they can prove that the road is, has a much safer feel to cross. If they fail to make people feel safe at that crossing, then I would, I absolutely think we, we have to get them to keep the footbridge. I'm not sure of the timeline. I did attend the meeting, but I was a little late. I'm not sure when they, my understanding is that they were waiting towards the end to remove the footbridge. But then I had heard another thing, like it was more towards the beginning, they were going to be taking the footbridge down. My understanding is, you know, this project, they're going to shrink the road down from like 55 feet to 22 feet, which sounds great. But again, we see people speeding on regular streets all the time. Why take a safe route away from a situation that, if it doesn't need to be taken away? So I've been, also been asking questions of my colony around whether or not there, this is triggering the state to have to either deal with it, meaning make it ADA, or, or take it down. If, if it doesn't trigger anything, and there's no, like, thing telling them they have to take it down, then I would absolutely be in favor of keeping the, the footbridge. So thank you, Counselor McLaughlin. I'd like to sign on.
Counselor Klingon would like to sign on. Counselor Strezzo?
Through you, to Counselor McLaughlin. I just wanted to say something. I know you seem like you wanted to respond to Counselor Klingon, but wanted to, through you to Counselor McLaughlin. Do you, have you heard any data? Because I know once the Winter Hill was relocated to the Edgely, there was a big push, of course, as you mentioned, to get people to use the footbridge. Has it been effective? Have you heard that? And then additionally, with that, is mobility willing? And I know it's a state road, but can we get a pedestrian count of the use of the footbridge? Because we can't, we need that. I see too many near misses.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes, Mr. President. Through you. So I don't have data on it, but I'll tell you that I have received a lot of emails from people, mostly people who don't live in my ward. And then I got a call from, or an email from one of our school committee reps who showed me a picture. Someone put a picture, put a sign on the bridge saying, "Contact your elected officials." So people seeing the sign are contacting me, which I think is an indication that a lot of people are using this bridge. So I do think that that is, I don't have hard numbers on it. And again, it is something that, I'm not a person who needs to use this bridge, but I think there are people who do. And if it's not needed to take it down, if we can even save money by not taking it down and have it not affect the overall project, I think that would be a benefit. And the only thing I just want to add to is, you know, this is a great project. It's going to take a highway, and it's going to make it not a highway. But a lot of people will still think it's a highway. And this is not changing it from a highway to, like, Hudson Street. It's taking a highway, making it Mass Ave. And I wouldn't want my child crossing Mass Ave without a stoplight and without things like this. So, great project. I just want to make sure it's, addresses everybody's concerns.
Counselor Burnley, do you want to speak on it?
Yes, thank you. I also am in support of this. And I want to just point out the specific location, reason why. We had a conversation about this and Bicycle Advisory Committee around supports for the overall project, but what position, if any, the advocacy group should take around the bridge. And one thing I pointed out, which I think is quite a compelling reason to keep it, if at all possible, is that this bridge is also right next to Deanna Kremen Playground. And I know that I've seen kids at that playground using it, and I, if I was having to come from the other side of McGrath to get there, and I had a kid, I wouldn't want to walk them the, on the street level. So I think that this is particularly important for the safety of very young children who use that playground. And if Mast Dot can do that with, do the overall project without tearing this down, it'd be great. Otherwise, it's my way or the, was it Mass Ave? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Klingon?
Mr. President, I just say one more thing on that. Brings up a good point, because I've been in talks with some Winter Hill parents. As far as talking to the, the Winter Hill at the Edgely, younger grades, like when the, when the K and pre-K move over there, you know, with this crunch for schoolyard space, and obviously they can't, it's been noted that they can't share the East Somerville Schoolyard. So a great option would be to walk down to Deanna Kremen Park. And if they do that, they're going to definitely need that footbridge. They're not going to want to walk an entire group of children across the highway. So at the very least, again, until the school is done, or, you know, until such time that people feel a sense of safety crossing, I mean, I just hope, I will push the state to not remove that bridge until, again, the very end of the project at the very least.
Thank you. And, you know, my understanding, as you all have said, this is an incredibly thrilling project, the, the lowering of the McGrath overpass. In addition to that, I think there is a lot of important feedback that is going to come from our community on this issue and a number of others. My understanding is that the next few months are a kind of critical time for us to get on the same page and get organized about our advocacy. And I know that a lot of the advisory committees in Somerville, the pedestrian advisory committee, bicycle advisory committee, are starting to work up those documents in collaboration with the Mobility Department. And I think it would be important for us all as elected officials to, to make sure that we're all kind of speaking in the same direction, so that the state hears loud and clear how full-throatedly we are in support of this project, and also the things that we, that we hope to advocate within it. So that item is referred to Traffic and Parking for discussion.
Item 10.6 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Mobility return the temporary parking sign that serves local businesses to the corner of Washington and Myrtle Streets.
Counselor McLaughlin?
If I could just amend this to replace Myrtle Street with Florence Street. I got the wrong street there. And I'd like to send this to Traffic and Parking.
As amended, that is referred to Traffic and Parking.
Item 10.7 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Inspeccional Services update the Ward One counselor on enforcement of the dark skies ordinance.
Counselor McLaughlin?
So this is an item we already discussed last year, and I'm just placing it again because we closed it out. I'd like to send this to Public Health and Safety.
That item is Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. Counselor Klingon?
Can I just speak on that? I am, I am curious. It's the Ward One counselor is bringing this up, and I was on the committee when, when this, this was discussed. The most, you know, so in Ten Hills, the two heads on the side of the, the building, the Puma Building, those LED lights, I mean, it casts a pretty bright light into the, into many of the homes right along Purdon. So I am curious as to, like, if that is, it's a cool feature, and I would, you know, I don't know, I'm torn, but it definitely seems like it's in some sort of violation of the night sky, dark sky.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Mr. President, on that, so we, when we discussed Assembly, they basically are exempt from the dark skies ordinance, which was written, I think, after Assembly was done. So that's why. And the issue we have is, anything that was before the dark skies ordinance, we can't enforce. And, but we can encourage them, politely ask them, but I'm mostly interested in the items that we can enforce. Yeah.
Counselor Said? Counselor Said?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I wasn't here last year, if Counselor McLaughlin can just say a few things about what the dark skies ordinance is, just to make sure that's understood.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Explanation about the dark skies ordinance? So this was brought up to me from a junior astronomer in my neighborhood, who is very excited about the coming eclipse, by the way. So it's basically trying to get rid of light pollution, excessive lighting. And his attitude and the attitude, the spirit of this motion was that oftentimes, lighting doesn't provide the security that people think it does. It actually affects people's vision to the point that they can't see as well in the dark. So we have this, I forget when the law was put into place, but it's basically trying to limit things like, you know, Assembly, although Assembly is exempt. But I had, for example, a car wash on Washington Street that had their lights beaming into people's houses. So we, that was an example of something that we tried to encourage them to use less lighting or use different lightbulbs that give off a different light.
Thank you.
All set? All right. That item is referred to Public Health and Safety.
Item 10.8 is an order by Councilors Wilson and Klingon that the Director of Mobility update this council on plans to address increased cut-through commuter traffic on Temple Street and Felsway West on weekday mornings, including any plans to prohibit right turns onto Temple Street and Felsway West from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM on weekdays.
Counselor Wilson?
Mr. President, Temple Street and Felsway West have been clogged by morning cut-through commuter traffic for, well, as long as I can remember, and I've lived in the neighborhood for two decades now. And it's only gotten worse with the McGrath Road Diet. I've spoken to Director Ross on Mobility about this, and in conjunction with the Ward Counselor. I'm submitting this order to have a conversation in committee about making sure that these residential streets don't bear the brunt of congestion spillover from our state highways. There was previously a no right turn, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM weekdays restriction with signage for Temple Street on Mystic Ave eastbound. I'd like to talk about bringing that back and possibly doing the same thing for Felsway West. I'd like to request this be sent to Traffic and Parking, which I serve on. Thanks.
Counselor Klingon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank, I'll just say, yeah, we've had discussions with neighbors in that area, definitely from the road diet, it's, it's increased the amount of traffic. And then until we get some speed bumps on Felsway West, I mean, that route is essentially kids that live in the Mystic, Mystic Development, or that whole area that possibly go into the Edgely, Winter Hill at Edgely, you know, Felsway West is sort of on their direct route. And the increased traffic and the speeding down Felsway West is at an all-time high right now. So this would really, hopefully, help to dissuade some, some folks who are just basically trying to get back to McGrath. But it's just, it's a minor shortcut that causes neighbors and, and affects the safety of our residents in a major way for what amounts to, like, saving two minutes or something, you know, for the drive or so. Yeah, I hope, I hope we can get those signs up. Thank you.
Counselor Burnley?
Thank you. Through you, I'd like to go further than my colleagues on this. As someone who used to live on Felsway West... As someone who used to live on Felsway West, not only is it unsafe when you have all these vehicles coming off Mystic or McGrath, speeding up the road, it's creepy. It's really creepy, because if you walk Felsway West at midnight, 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, as I have been known to do, you have Uber drivers, Lyft drivers sitting there or speeding down those roads, just waiting for their next gig. No, not, no. And I would just say, let's cut off everyone who's not in Somerville from Felsway West. It's a nice little street next to Park, and nobody likes you people who keep cutting through. So bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mbah?
Thank you, Mr. President. As someone who used to live on Jake Street, I'm not, I'm not going to go further, you know, as my colleague, but I just want to express my support for, you know, this order. Thank you.
Excellent. That item is referred to Traffic and Parking.
Item 10.9 is an order by Councilor Wilson that the Director of Racial and Social Justice update this council on the promised roadmap from the consultant for implementing the recommendations in the report on police staffing and operations delivered in November.
Councilor Wilson, Councilor Scott, and Burnley would like to sign on.
Yeah, Mr. President, hopefully, we all remember the November 30th confirmation of appointments in Personnel Matters Committee, Committee of the Whole Meeting, right here in this room, where consultants from Raftellus presented the recommendation from their much-anticipated report on our police staffing operations, and where the consultant said a draft implementation plan already had been written and would be sent to this council the first week of December. That didn't happen. We haven't heard anything about this in the nearly four months since, so I'd love to get an update on what is going on here. I'll let the President decide whether confirmation of appointments in Personnel Matters or Public Health and Public Safety makes more sense for this discussion. I don't serve on either committee, but I trust those committees implicitly to discuss this and get to the bottom of this very weird mystery.
Councilors Mbah would like to sign on. Councilors Klingon and then Burnley.
Yeah, just a quick little comment. We might want to look in the same location that Charter Reform has gone. I think that it seems to be the black box where things go to disappear.
Councilor Burnley?
Thank you. I prefer for this to go to CAPM, just because eventually, all the, this conversation seems to parallel the lateral hiring conversation, and I think all these kind of things are going to, their personnel matters. And CAPM seems to be the right venue to me for that.
My concern is the amount of stuff that CAPM has already in its hopper, and the Chair is not here to discuss that directly, but my inclination is to send this to, to Public Safety as a committee. Is there any further discussion on that? I think it makes a lot more sense. Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, maybe a slight ray of good news in the otherwise weird mystery. It was just this week, reading the first draft of the report from the Committee on Civilian Oversight, Civilian Oversight Task Force, on which I serve. And one of the recommendations in this report was, of course, to have that such committee, and then, and this report was, was cited as one of the reasons, as well as our work at the council. And I was glad to see that, you know, a number of rationales for that were cited, and so this is one of it. So we will be submitting that report soon, hopefully more soon than, you know, available in December and not here in March. I anticipate it'll be coming forth, but at least one of the recommendations is moving forward, and I look forward to sharing that all with you when, when it's there.
Excellent. All right, that item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 10.10 is an order by Councilor Wilson that the Commissioner of Public Works update this council on the condition of Conway Field and the displacement of infill that is occurring there during extreme rainfall events, as well as the schedule for regular grooming and maintenance of the city's artificial turf athletic fields.
Councilor Wilson?
Mr. President, first of all, I was remiss in not including Councilor Scott on this, as he is the Ward Counselor for Conway Park. I apologize to our colleague from Ward 2. This is what I get for sending an order, I think, at 11:55 p.m. I did debate, just taking a chance and including him, assuming he would sign on to it, but I didn't want to do that. Nonetheless, we're seeing significant displacement of the Brock fill, infill, that's the ground-up southern pine that we thankfully now use instead of crumb rubber. It's what keeps the pile, the blades of artificial grass standing vertically and not lying flat at Conway Field, particularly when there are significant rainfall events. We end up with really major concentrations of this infill at some of the corners of the field, while in other areas of the field, the pile is, is almost flat. So I'm curious about whether drainage is turning out to be an issue there, if it's functioning properly at Conway, as well as the, the maintenance plan that we have in place, both the, the regular turf grooming schedule and one-off remediation groomings, both for, for Conway and for these seven other synthetic turf fields in our city being maintained by the City of Somerville. I'd love to see this be sent to Open Space Environment and Energy for discussion if the Presidency is fit. Thanks.
All right, that is referred to Open Space.
Item 10.13 is a public communication from Daniela Gon tonowick submitting comments regarding item 24-0089, a resolution in support of an enduring ceasefire in Gaza.
That item is placed on file.
Item 10.14 is a public communication from the Pedestrian and Transit Advisory Committee submitting comments regarding the fiscal year 2025 budget.
That item is placed on file with a copy to Finance.
That's already done in Finance?
That's already done in Finance, placed on file.
Item 10.15 is a public communication from Green and Open Somerville and Earthwise Aware submitting comments regarding invasive plant species.
That item is placed on file. Is that, sorry, is that in reference to a specific thing before a committee? I'm not aware of it.
No, it's not.
Okay. Budget, yeah. Okay, that item is placed on file. Thank you.
Item 10.16 is a public communication from Respond submitting comments regarding item 23-0075, an ordinance establishing paid leave for survivors.
Excellent. That item is going to be, a copy will be referred to Legislative Matters. Councilor Burnley?
Oh, can we also get a copy sent to IGA and Director of Human Resources?
You may. They may access this.
Well, I mean, yeah, but I want them, I want them to look, okay?
All right, that, that will be placed on file with a copy of Legislative Matters.
And that brings us to the end of our agenda, Mr. President.
Are there late items?
There are no further items before the council. So we're going to take a bunch of them off the table.
Just going to recess for one quick second to ask somebody a question. All right, seeing no further business before the council. Do we need to do a roll call back?
We do.
Apologies, folks.
Sir, sir.
So this will be on?
What, sir?
10.15 actually does refer to a specific item that is in committee. Councilor Burnley on item 10.15, after we are officially back, we have to do a roll call to come back into order, is that right?
We, no, it was less than a minute.
Okay.
Where is that going, though?
Open Space, please.
Okay, let's refer item 10 dot 15 to the Committee on Open Space, and then take everything off the table, please.
So this will be on approval of items 1.3, 3.1, 4.1 to 4.3, 4.5 to 4.9, 6A through 6D, 6F through 6I, 9.1 through 9.12, 10.1 through 10.10 and 10.12, and to place on file items 4.4, 4.10, 8.2, 9.13 to 9.19, and 10.13 to 10.16. On those items, Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilor Said?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes, please.
Councilor Mbah?
Aye.
Councilor Burnley?
Aye.
Councilor Klingon?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Panada Neufeld?
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, those items are approved and placed on file as indicated.
Excellent. And on adjournment?
One more, on adjournment. Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilor Said?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Mbah?
Aye.
Councilor Burnley?
Aye.
Councilor Klingon?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Panada Neufeld?
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, this council is adjourned. Yeah, honestly, I don't even think I'm going to record that, because it wasn't even a full minute.
Okay.